Thursday, May 25th, 2017, meeting of the Planning Board. We start each meeting with an opportunity for anyone who wants to come speak to us. It's public comment. Anything that's not on the agenda, we'll work our way through the agenda. But occasionally, people want to bring up a topic of their own, so this is a starting point to do that. Our seven o'clock agenda item is a site plan. Brandon Bruceus probably butchered that for Jonathan Tower to add detached residential structure at 55 Maple Street, Florence map ID 23A-1059. Is there a presentation or are you going to summarize it for us?
No.
Is there someone that wants to describe the project?
Yeah.
Hi there.
Hi. I'm Jonathan and this is, and this is my wife Sarah.
Hi.
And we decided not to have the builders here tonight, but we are planning on building a small detached handicap accessible house next to our house in Florence for my sister who has MS. So when I went initially to the building committee, I'm a contractor, and said, what do I have to do? Is this going to be an accessory apartment? They said, no, North Hampton recently passed a law where you can have another primary residence on your lot. So that triggered the Planning Board meeting. And so we submitted our plans to you guys.
Did you discuss them with the building office yet?
Yeah, yeah. And there was a little bit of confusion back and forth. Would it be easier to make it an attached structure? We didn't, we didn't want a garage that goes across the whole lot. We wanted a carport. And then someone at the Planning Committee said, oh, you can do that. That would be considered attached. Went back to the building department. They said, no, we really don't like that. We want it completely enclosed. So that is the plan right now, is to have a 922 square foot, single floor building with a carport that goes over towards our existing house.
Right.
Well insulated, green.
That's right.
And it's already zoned to family.
It's already zoned?
Yep.
So do you have road frontage and clearance?
Yep.
And so all of the questions that Louis would have asked you, you got the right answer to?
Yep, yep. Twenty feet setback and fifty foot setback. And because it's a corner lot, we could pick which one was going to be twenty and which one was going to be fifteen. The initial plans that I sent over, there wasn't clarification on the driveway, so I sent over more that it has to be, you know, fifteen feet wide, ten feet back as a right of way.
Is it a relatively dry plot?
Yes.
Congratulations. It's right at the top of the hill.
And there's sewer right there in our house and there's the water there. So we, our builder talked to the DDW to see if there was anything that, that we needed to be aware of with that. And he said, no, it could be simple to hook right in there.
There are considerations for how deep the sewer lines are in some places in town, but I'm sure in the middle of Florence, it's good.
Any questions for the applicant?
Okay. Mark?
Only question was, it's slightly more than the 900 square foot allowance, just how I found it, 922?
Yeah, 922.
So I can clarify that, actually. So if someone is building, an accessory apartment is only allowed as part of a single family home. So right now, I'm not, there was a, maybe the applicant can clarify whether there's currently a single or a two family. As a two family, you can have an accessory apartment, and accessory apartments can only be 900 square feet. So this happens to be in a zone where there's, you know, there are options. So now we allow this detached additional residential unit, which would have to be the path, even if it were a single family home, because it exceeds the 900 square feet anyway. So that's why, from, you know, the zoning standpoint, it came through as a site plan from the Planning Board as opposed to a special permit to the zoning board of appeals. And so not being an accessory apartment also means there won't be the requirement that the unit be owner, that one of the units be owner occupied. So it's treated slightly differently, even though it is a very, you know, comparable size to an accessory unit, as defined in North Hampton.
Somewhere in there, there was something that said something about having to have six parking spaces?
So it depends on the total number of units. So I don't know if you can clarify whether this is the existing house, is it a single or a two family?
Right now.
I'll determine. So it's two spaces per unit, essentially, except for, because it's based on one per thousand square feet of area.
Okay. So that was in there in case that was a, already a two family? Okay. Well, that's good.
So I don't know. Can you clarify that?
So the house, right now, is all owned by, or occupied by one family.
So functions as a single family?
Functions as a single family. It's zoned as a two family.
Well, the zoning allows two family if you have enough lot size. So any house could have that. So it's just basically how it's create, you know, what it's utilized for. So if, so if you were to use it as a two family, so this would be the third unit, then you would need five parking spaces because, well, I guess it depends on the size of each of the units within the house.
Yeah, they're only adding the size of one.
Right. So not, the, the unit that's being added would trigger an additional, the need for one additional parking space. As functioning as a single family for the house, you only need two. So a total of three. However, if in the future, you wanted to rent out a second unit in the main house, and it was more than a thousand square feet of area that became that second unit, or that was utilized for the second unit, you'd need two more, so five total.
You know, one thing to think about is, you've got this, you know, unified structure, you've got this whole idea of why you're doing this, but I'd like to give just a moment to think about if you sold one of the houses, or if they became different, would that change any of our thinking at this moment?
Well, I mean, it was really, it's really a function of the parking and can they accommodate? So I don't think ownership matters. I think it's the total number of units.
Well, I'm just sort of confirming that they're not using a joint driveway, or, you know, that there's not, you know, that it really can be a separable house if they want it.
Can they really sell the uni, could they split the units?
Split the parts?
You could create a condominium, but in order to create separate lots, you need distinct 50 feet of frontage and 75 feet of depth. I don't know if the geometry is there to accommodate that.
Okay.
So they'd have to continue with a shared, the existing driveway and share in that.
Any questions of us?
No, I don't think so.
So.
Your motion?
I.
John.
Can we turn the public?
Pardon?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone in the public that wants to comment on the project? I knew that. All right, thank you.
Do I need to close public comment?
Motion to close.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Ann. All in favor?
I move site plan approval at 55 Maple Street, Florence map ID 23A-059 to add a detached residential structure.
Thank you. Second. Test second, sit. All in favor? Set. Thank you.
Look with your seat.
Air Bambi.
So the next item on the agenda is scheduled for 7:15, so we've got just a minute. Do you want to do?
Yeah, let me just catch, catch up.
Okay. That's actually why we were asking, talking so much.
You just need to put in that 15.
And then I saw you and I'm like, there's a box of donuts somewhere. Strada Central's location. Oh, Coles, that you guys like provided, that's on Adelaide, it's cool stuff? It's great. That's good.
That is the old building?
Said supply. And we kind of started talking about, we just didn't know what.
Somebody didn't like that one.
Soon, right?
I've had a little piece of one.
What is this?
Tess needs one.
I mean.
Have you ever been to the donut dip in West Springs?
That's donut Nirvana.
It is donut. Yeah, it's truly amazing.
This is the second time I've gotten these. Been both times for a Planning Board.
So we have, just watch yourself.
You only have three minutes to eat them all.
These things are, they're not, I'm just sort of against a donut, they cost.
We don't have any minutes. You could do an A and R.
Yeah, we have A and Rs.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that delay of game. We don't have minutes to consider, but we have a couple of A and Rs. So Carolyn can explain one of them to us.
Let's see. So this, this is approval not required on West, is it? Why am I not, oh yeah, West Hampton Road. That was down here. Thought some of, this is right at the, one of the curves, West Hampton Road, here. It's actually, there's, there's no creation of a developable lot. There were three flag lots that were created here. It's west of Lindell Road, going, heading towards West Hampton, and there's a big curve, and then it starts going up the hill towards the Ridge subdivision. So it's booked on, basically, there were three flag lots that were created, and there's, and so this land is a portion of that. This is not creating any developable land. This is actually for the purposes of getting conservation land north of the flag lot. So this is just divide, carving off a piece of the back of the parcel to dedicate to the city. There've been some historic lead mines discovered in this area, and it's all sort of up on a hill, heading up towards.
Which conservation area is it?
It's new. It wouldn't quite connect to the one coming off of Turkey Hill Road. So just the north, the next road parallel north is Turkey Hill Road, so west of West Harms Road, and there's some conservation land up there. This won't quite.
Mineral Hills.
Yeah, part of that Mineral Hills, but it doesn't quite come down this far, so this is another big chunk. So this, the purpose of this A and R isn't to create a building lot. It's just for gift, for dedication.
How much land is it?
This parcel is, total parcel, because we're doing this in pieces. This one is, let's say, 31 acre, almost 30, about 32 acres, with a strip down to the road just for access.
Any comments? Any concerns?
Yeah, the city actually wants a property that has historic lead mines on it.
This isn't.
Not that that's part of the discussion necessarily, but.
That isn't this property, though, is it? It's the property that's adjacent.
There's a property adjacent to it.
To it, yeah.
This is sort of, this is like part of the puzzle that's coming together. Yeah. So people don't fall in and.
Got it. Motion to approve A and R lead mines.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. We can take the 7:15 agenda item, which is a special permit for 10 lot open spaces residential cluster development and site plan for shared driveways with associated site development by Office of Planning and Sustainability on Burt's Pit Road, Florence map ID 29-012.
Okay. So the reason why there's not going to be a presentation, and there's nobody here except for one person, is that we, just this week, realized that because there are multiple parcels associated with this, we were checking the abutters list, and we hadn't grabbed one of the parcels to, as part of the defining the total abutter notification portion. So we needed to continue this so that we could notify, that notice has now gone out to the second list, second group, and it's been re-advertised as well. So we put it in for June 8th at 7:00 PM. So the weird request that you continue it without discussion to June 8th at 7:00, you also have continued the Atwood Drive project to 7:00 PM. I would suggest that this also be at 7:00 PM, but in front, because there'll be more residents who would be interested in this, and so instead of having them wait through another permit, put them at the top of the agenda, and we'll just notify the folks at the other project that they're on at 7:00, but it'll come after this one. So if you're agreeable to that.
So motion, motion to continue to June 8th at 7:00 PM?
Second. Mark seconds. All in favor?
Yep.
I cannot be there, June 8th.
Okay. So is everybody, so Devin's not here, Alan's not here.
My date is kind of, this, the Thursday.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that should be.
Excuse me, does anything change the information we have?
So actually, I do have updated plans that I think.
Is that the stuff that came today?
I emailed you.
Yeah.
And this is the hard copy of the email. So I'll just pass these down. There's.
I'll bring some stuff.
Alan. Hey, want to do another A and R, or you caught up with us?
No, no, we've got two more, and we've got some other subdivision. So this is a two-part A and R, and it's really partially, part of it's really was originally a perimeter plan, but this has to do with the Burt's Pit project that is before you. But because of the timing, for needing permits and needing to move the project forward for grant funding, this, our office wanted to move ahead to create A and R plans for what has legal frontage now. And it's all really based on the timing to get it in the grant cycle before the end of June. So this plan is for that entire parcel that's part of the Burt's project. So it essentially creates, it, this, this was in your packet. So the frontage for this parcel is still legal. It's 125 feet of frontage, and of course, there's plenty of lot area. But we would carve out this box that are those 10 lots, because that by itself is a, is a allowed frontage parcel. So this is really to legally create these two portions of the property on this end, and then the second one I'll show you is what already exists on the other street, Stone Ridge Pond, on the north side of that area. So this isn't, this is merely to create a parcel so we can move ahead with actions.
It's this, these parcels?
It's not to create those parcels. Those will, can only be created after the board makes a decision about that cluster.
These parcels are where on that?
In this rectangle right here. So.
So it's the rectangle, not the parcels?
So it's the rectangle, and then this piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then this would have to be a third A and R if and when the board approves those parcels, because they would only be legal once the special permit is granted.
Any questions of Carolyn?
No, anybody? Is there any downside to approving the A and R first, and then say if that's rejected, or, you know, the Burt's Pit development comes up? Does anything, does anything change, or is there any downside?
The only, so if the negotiation falls apart, is that what you're?
I guess, yeah. I'm just thinking, do we, does somebody get boxed into a corner or something if this goes first?
No, because this is really identifying the outlining, the outer boundaries, and it is creating this, but you could always merge that back into this bigger parcel. And right now, it's under, well, there are a couple of different entities, but right, when it, if it becomes under single ownership, it doesn't really matter until it gets divided and sold off.
Okay.
And the frontage, I mean, the frontage exists, so anybody could come in and say, I want permission for this, because the frontage meets, I mean, that's all the board is really reviewing, is that you're not building any new roads. So, yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion? To approve an A and R?
The A and R, the Burt's Pit Road.
Ann, drive second. Mark? All in favor? Okay.
And the second piece of that is, can you actually hold that up? I'll show you contact. It's, it's this piece over here that's actually indicated as an excluded portion of the, of the project. And so in the, so the next A and R is, are these two lots. They already, they, they're just sort of being reconfigured from their existing layout, and this is not part of the permit review, because these lots are already legal lots. They're just being redrawn. So and the frontage is on Stone Ridge Drive, and they'd be two building lots.
That's regardless of whatever else is going on.
Right, right.
So why isn't that one part of that one?
Because these are, that was part of the negotiation. These are, these are going to stay with the developer, because this was originally, these were two lots that just never got built on part of the Stone Ridge.
Questions? A and Rs? Test approves of the A and R and section. All in favor? Can you oppose? Thank you.
So the next, sort of other item on the agenda is for, so for a reduction in performance guarantee for the, for the Northview subdivision, which is the one at the, at the state hospital, Peacoys project on the northwest side. So they have two performance guarantees. They have one that holds two lots under covenant, and the other piece of their performance guarantee is a tri-party agreement that's based on the amount of money that's left to, to build out. And so there's two requests that they have in front of the board, and, I'm sorry, I need to pull up the exact dollar amount. They are asking for a reduction in the remaining amount, and DPW has looked at the numbers and is comfortable with that. We saw, there was a little bit of back and forth, because they had to do some erosion control up there. There was an issue with the detention pond that was built was sort of, over the winter, had not, vegetation had not taken hold, and so.
Just to be clear, is this the one where they, they cleared and it drops way down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So they were able to take care of, of that, and they progress, they've actually, I think they have the first, they have a binder course down now for the road. So they've done a significant amount of work just in the last month, I guess I would say. So they're asking for release of some of that money, and I just, I want to pull up the number here. Sorry.
This is the one across from the barn on the left-hand side. Is that right? If you go around the top of that, if you go around the top of that, the barn is over here, and it's.
Yes, yes. Yes. Um, let me just put the last. Okay. So it dropped, so they would like it reduced down to 530,000, 567, and they have a schedule of values that was submitted for each line item that they still are, is remaining. And they started up, I think it was around 800,000. So they want to subtract basically 300,000, around that value due. So they've asked for that. DPW's looked at each line item to make sure that it's there, and they, they actually added a number for erosion control. So that's the request to reduce it down to 530,567 and 42 cents.
And the schedule, just for the record, there's, there's maybe 30 items on the, that they've given estimates for, so they've broken it down and.
Are you just seeing that there, or did we get that?
Yeah, I mean, I can put it up on the screen if you want to be, it's a really tiny print, but it's, it has, it's, they're done mostly, so they're almost pretty close to, the site prep and demo, which was originally in their line item, is almost 100% done. Earthwork is about 90% done. They haven't done the utilities yet. They've done most, almost, well, they've done 100% of the drainage. They've done 100% of the sanitary and water, and so the remaining is really sort of road, and then some of the utility work, installation, and then, of course, the finish work, grant, the curbing, the sidewalks, the landscaping, and all of that are the line items left.
In the future, would time allow for that schedule of values to be shared prior to board meetings? Because I deal with things like that all the time.
Of course.
And so what happens sometimes, I'm not saying this is happening now, but they'll show percentage-wise they're complete, but they front-load the numbers to make it look like, well, the, the work that's left, the granite, the road, the utilities, aren't worth much, the, the heavy money is, is work we've actually done. So if you look at a percentage complete basis, you'd say, well, they're 95%, 100%, so they're good. But if you actually look at the value of the work that remains, the numbers might be upside down.
Right, sure, absolutely. And one of the things, so typically what happens is they, they submit, and it's, I mean, this is public information. I have no problem, you know, putting it on the, putting it out there for you all to see. So that's not an issue. That's, I think that's exactly also what DPW looks for, is just to give you all comfort.
Right.
So that's why we send it, because I don't have that same expertise. So I send it to DPW to have them feel like they're comfortable.
How long did that take, their review?
Well, we asked them to revise it, so it was, there was some back and forth. So I would say a few weeks, yeah.
So, excuse me, something like this, before the project ever starts, do they do what this is called a schedule of values? Is that submitted for approval before they start, or do they submit this after, when they're looking for this reduction?
No, we, so they start at the beginning. They say, here's how much we think this project's going to cost to build. DPW reviews it and, and makes sure they're comfortable with the line items. And everything is very specific, for every pipe, every tree is, is a per-unit count.
And those line item values don't change?
What happens sometimes, I'm not saying this is happening now, but they'll show percentage wise they're complete, but they front-load the numbers to make it look like, well, the work that's left, the granite, the road, the utilities aren't worth much, the heavy money is, is work we've actually done. So if you look at a percentage complete basis, you'd say, well, they're 95%, 100%, so they're good. But if you actually look at the value of the work that remains, the numbers might be upside down.
Right, sure, absolutely. And one of the things, so typically what happens is they, they submit and it's, I mean, this is public information, I have no problem, you know, putting it on the, putting it out there for you all to see. So that's not an issue, that's, I think that's exactly also what DPW looks for is just to give you all comfort.
Right.
So that's why we send it, because I don't have that same expertise. So I send it to DPW to have them feel like they're comfortable.
How long did that take, their review?
Well, we asked them to revise it, so it was, there was some back and forth, so I would say a few weeks, yeah.
So, excuse me, something like this, before the project ever starts, do they do what this is called a scheduled values, is that submitted for approval before they start or do they submit this after when they're looking for this reduction?
No, we, so they start at the beginning, they say, here's how much we think this project's going to cost to build. DPW reviews it and, and makes sure they're comfortable with the line items. And everything is very specific for every pipe, every tree is, is a per-unit count.
And those line item values don't change once the project starts?
Right, and so we use that and then they're saying, okay, we put this much in and, and so we'd like, because we only have this much left, this is how much, right. So we, we approve the, their original estimate when they, before they set the performance guarantee and we say, okay, that's how much you have to hold back. And then each time they ask, we review again.
This is infrastructure and, and lawns and bushes and the infrastructure, not the housing.
Not the houses and not the lots, not the, not the utilities and the landscaping on the.
The public, as it were.
Right, right. Just for the road system.
And DPW did provide its, its okay on this?
Yes.
Does the developer have to give you any paperwork that shows that they really have spent that? I'm just pushing to see how, how much detail you get.
Yeah, so every, they're required to do weekly logs to the city to show what's been put in and they also have to show construction oversight, you know, the engineer, there's a, there's a sort of a resident engineer that oversees the daily and weekly work and they give logs, so it's constantly, they're providing that data to DPW and then, so that is sort of the check to see, you know, things are being done.
Okay. It wouldn't surprise me if they provided it to the building office, but it's the DPW because it's infrastructure.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to reduce performance guarantee for Northview?
Second by John, all in favor? Can you post? Nope.
Okay, so then the other piece that they've asked to do is they have in addition to that financial agreement, they have two lots that are under covenant, which means they can't sell, that's also part of the collateral essentially. And they've got lots 17 and 18 under covenant and they want to switch those to lot eight and nine. So if you remember, it was sort of a lollipop loop. 17 and 18 are on the lower end, closer to Ford Crossing and eight and nine are up higher. And so they would just like to switch those around. I think when they first recorded the covenants, they weren't really, they didn't necessarily know where they'd be going first with infrastructure, so they weren't sure which lots made sense to keep under covenant. So this is fairly common practice to come in and just switch lots around once they decide.
We did that a few times on the one off of Burt's Pit.
Emerson, yeah.
It seemed like we did that three or four times.
Right.
Is that a function of how they're selling out?
And the, where they're working and sort of, yes, the lots that are more desirable or what have you at this point in time.
Are we at risk of letting them hold aside lots that aren't that desirable and therefore they're not serving the purpose they're intended to?
I don't, this is such a small subdivision, I would say probably not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Carolyn? Motion?
We approve the switching to two lots under covenant.
Second by Ann, all in favor? Agreeable bunch tonight. We have five more minutes, we have to wait until we get to the agenda item.
So is there, I think we've done more than five minutes.
Uh huh.
And so Barrett Street, so this is actually was a permit condition for the condominium project on Barrett Street. So there, if you recall, there was a concern about the, whether or not the stormwater system would function the way it was designed. So the permit condition requires that they set aside enough money to sort of address or reconstruct or rebuild the system if it turns out it's not functioning the way it was designed. So they have to post that performance guarantee as part of the condition of the permit before they start construction. They've done some site clearing, but they haven't done any work, we have to define what this number is. So they submitted a number to DPW, it seemed a little low, we asked for more detail, sort of again, the line item. And they came back around some $60,000 plus dollars for the stormwater system itself. We've added a 20% contingency because that's required under subdivision standards. So the total amount for the performance guarantee would be 76,560. So you all need to officially approve that as the number and then they would set aside that amount in a letter of credit or a bond or something like that.
What's the duration? Like for how long is that money set aside? Till we remove it or?
So they would come back and ask for it to be removed and we'd want to see certification by an engineer that the system was functioning as designed.
So it's open-ended, once we, if we accept it tonight, it's just, it's open-ended?
Right.
So what happens if?
Sorry.
It doesn't work and that's not enough money? What is the next step after that?
So they would, I mean, they submitted an, they submitted information and base, and you approved a plan based on the performance of the project. So if it's not performing as designed, then they're out of compliance and they would have to figure out a means to fix that.
So just to follow up, so they put, you know, it's their best guess, whatever, as far as money, but the reality is, it's, does it perform? And the money will not become the limit as far as getting it fixed.
Right.
If that's what needs to happen, that doesn't, it's not like, okay.
Right.
Mark?
My question is kind of on the heels of the last discussion, is a scheduled values submitted ahead of time that the DPW approves? Cause in this case you said that their first number seemed low.
They had a very generic number, they said, here's, this will be, I think they even said something like the detention pond and it was 40,000. And DPW looked at it and said, that looks low. What does that mean that it's a detention pond? Does that include the pipes, the infiltration, you know, all the leaders going into it? And so then they went back to the contractor and said, what does this include? Make sure you include all of these things. So then the contractor said, oh no, it doesn't include that, here's what it includes. And so provided a line item. So now we know exactly what that number includes.
My only concern would be not if it doesn't work and they're still around, they're on the hook to fix it. But worst-case scenario, if, if they're knee-deep in this and then they go belly up.
Right.
And you have $76,000, is that enough to hire contractor B to come in and make it right? And if the first pass by the DPW said, whoo, this number is too low, try again, then that makes me concerned that the second number might be low. But not having a value or scheduled values, if, if there was a scheduled values and they said, all right, our first number was just a guess, or please clarify, the DPW said, and then they came back with a line item breakdown and DPW's good with that, then I'm good with that.
That's what they did the second time around. The first time was just one element and it wasn't clear what that was. And so from the DPW's perspective, they were thinking the system has, you know, seems a little bit more robust and necessary to have more items and, you know, it's more expensive probably, tell us what this includes. So then they brought back all the items, they identified what they were and gave the value for that, for each of those.
So is this, is this just a monetary guarantee or is this a bonded guarantee? So that if they go belly up, there's an insurance company behind this that will.
It would always be limited to a lot.
And.
It's a performance bond though.
What was the condition that was adopted by the board?
I'll get the specific language.
It was we had to, verification that it worked before occupancy or before permit or something like that.
Right, so basically the value of the system had to be, excuse me, set aside so that if it had to be rebuilt or it wasn't working, then there would be money set aside, a separate pot that.
In the cost of the system.
Yes, for the cost of the system.
So that would be the limitation, but not beyond that for performing it up to any standard?
Well, it, yeah, I mean, it has to perform the way it was designed, so that's the performance.
But the performance bond is in an amount that's equal to the cost of the system.
Right.
Mark hopes.
So they could put a second system in basically or?
Or if they need to add something to enhance it, yeah.
From my education, I want to go back to whether they're bonded or not and whether that means there's a difference in the sureness of getting the money if they go bankrupt.
If there's a surety behind it, then they go belly up, insurance company comes in behind them, hires contractor B and they get it done. If it's just a dollar amount that the city's withholding, they go belly up.
Oh, as I recall.
And if you try to hire contractor B and contractor B says, ooh, this is $200,000, not 76, then you're in trouble.
Yeah, I mean, so the applicant gets to choose which, it is to the value that they've determined this system, you know, cost to create. And, but we can't dictate which type of guarantee that they want to post.
Right.
So they get to choose, but we have language in there that says, you know, this is for, you know, we get to check to make sure it's working the way you said it was going to work before we release this money. So it is, I guess, possible in a scenario that just like in any subdivision, that someone else comes along and needs to finish it, it might cost more than what, you know, because of the time passage and construction costs go up or whatever. I mean, that's why we also put in the 20% contingency to cover, you know, some of that, it's a little bit of a cushion.
My concern when you, the phrase you used, they determine this is how much that costs and my concern would be that they shouldn't determine that, DPW should determine that. But if they sent a line on a breakdown, DPW signed off on it.
Yes.
DPW obviously reviewed it because they said the first number was too low.
I'm just, I'm just, that, there was a heated debate, you know, there was a lot of issues concerning this development and just my concern would be as a group that we make sure we're covering all the bases on behalf of not just the development, but the people around the development.
So.
Any other thoughts? There were, there were some wetlands in the story too, a lot of water and.
Another aside note, what if, what if on that lot, and we've had other discussions like this, if it works, but it causes all sorts of trouble downstream that's off that lot? And is that basically somebody else's problem?
Well, I guess, but that's, you know.
How has it been described that it's going to work is the question under those circumstances, isn't it?
I thought we said, like we had that one in Florence that was the low point in the neighborhood and they said, they'll fix the drainage on that lot.
Right.
But it can't be expected to fix the drainage five lots down.
You're dealing with the same sort of thing there unless you were very specific about what it was going to do further down.
Right, and you can't necessarily point to one thing and say, you know, if you, there's water issues in that area no matter what. I mean, there's high water, there's wetlands in the back, so people now sometimes have issues. So they were showing that, that they're not making that worse. They're sending, they're actually distributing a little bit. So, you know, I think you, what they showed you was showing that they were addressing their, their stormwater the same way the other projects are and that's the only thing. I mean, they can't fix, you know, existing problems in the surrounding, on the surrounding properties.
I was just trying to stretch the conversation to 7:40.
Well, I've forgotten it, if you want the language, I can pull that up. So, sorry. So prior to commencement of any site work, the applicant must post a financial performance guarantee in accordance with the planning board rules that will cover the cost for constructing the stormwater system. Prior to posting, the final amount shall be approved by the board. The guarantee may only be released upon review and approval by the board. The board shall make its determination based on reports from the applicant's engineer that the system is working according to the design. And such evaluation report shall only be completed after all foundations have been poured and the street infrastructure is in place.
So they're going to come back to us and ask to release that?
Release, right.
And that too, I'm not comfortable with their engineer giving me the answer, that would go before DPW to, to see if it was performed.
If they occur.
Right.
Yeah, DPW can't do the analysis.
Right.
Also by, it's by, at the tail end of the thing because they're not going to build all the foundations at first.
Well, no, they, I think the issue was they were saying they were going to, it, it was, it may, it's more cost-effective for them to come in and do all the foundations at once, I guess.
Any other questions for Carolyn?
Motion to accept performance guarantee for Barrett Street, $76,560.
Thank you Tess, second by John, all in favor? unanimous. I'd like to open the third agenda item for 740 Site Plan 22 Car Parking Lot by Smith College at 19 Arnold Avenue, Northampton, MAP ID 31D-057. Yes, sir?
Just a point of note, I've worked with Jeff and Berkshire Design many times and currently working with them because of the work I do. I don't think it includes me from being impartial, but if anybody thinks differently, I can recuse myself.
Anybody want to vote on that? No, no, not vote, but any hands raised? No, thank you, Mark. Hey Jeff?
Off and away?
Yep.
Oh, you know what, that probably went on sleep mode.
Okay. And everything else was working on this end.
We used to have someone else who would have to recuse themselves from this one. The Smith engineer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're using such an old map on here, it says Northampton State Hospital on it.
The USGS map?
Yeah, this one on the front. There's a lot of funny stuff on here.
Thank you, Carolyn. So good evening, everyone. Jeff Swire from Berkshire Design. So, perfect. So we're here on behalf of Smith College who's looking at building a new small 22-car parking lot behind Ford Hall, it's off of Arnold Ave, to an existing lot that they've got now. I don't have my point here, so I apologize, but basically if you look at the right image, the aerial, green streets, sort of in the middle there, West Street on the right, a red star is roughly where, what we were talking about. The existing site now, and I apologize, just keep in mind that the, the plans orient a little bit differently, so north isn't always up. But West Street in this case is on the top end of the slide. There's an existing lot there now, I'll go to the aerial because it's probably a little bit easier to see. So there's an existing parking lot there now that was built as part of the Arnold Ave, or Ford Hall project. There's some rental units and office, Smith office buildings and some of the adjacent buildings. The, the one building that you see, the one house that you see directly above Ford Hall is the site that we're looking at, that site, that structure has since been removed, I think it was removed last year, maybe a couple of years ago. So right now, which is an open lawn area with the expectation that something was going to happen there in the future. to happen there in the future. Part of this effort is combined with some of the other, you know, construction projects going on on campus, so there's going to be large parking lots and parking displaced as part of other projects. So this is sort of getting heading of that, getting ahead of that, trying to provide some of that parking closer to where they really need it in anticipation of those larger lots going away. So what's really being proposed is, as you see there, the addition to this parking lot as part of this gray, you know, gravel area that you see between the houses just above the parking lot is just a small improvement. Right now, there's a gravel road and drive, if you will, parking area that provides service to, provides parking for all the rental units that are, you know, those buildings and those locations, not necessarily in the parking lots. And right now, it extends, if you go back, it's, it's hard to see, but that gravel, all of that area behind those houses is all gravel right now. You can drive from that parking lot all the way out to West Street, the parking lot on the right, which is the municipal lot. So this is an effort to, you know, combined with the parking lot, clean up some of that, help define some of that parking, you know, put the number of spaces that those rental units need, prevent some of the cross-through going back and forth. So just a couple of the, we are asking for a waiver from the photometric plan primarily because they're trying to match the existing lights that are in the current lot at Ford Hall now. Those lights, they don't manufacture anymore with the type of bulb that's in them. They only make them in an LED. I think these are low, sort of, I think. But what we're trying to do is match those lights. So we're going to take some of the existing lights that are in the lot across from the felt building, which are the same light installed at the same time. There's three or four primarily for impurposes in this, in this area. Relocate those lights to here and put new lights in the felt lot. So we're asking for a waiver for the photometrics, just because those photometrics aren't available anymore, is the bottom line. The tree replacement, we are taking down one 36-inch tree. I think it's a maple. We are proposing replacement of seven new trees. There's an elm that we're going to put. There's four or five flowering cherries as part of this project, and those are highlighted in the darker green. There's, there's a hedgerow we're also putting in. We're trying to contain trash and recycling units for rental units, so there's a lot of disorder, organization and separation of uses, you know, as part of this project. And then, again, these are, these are the lights that, that they're going to be using that aren't available anymore, but we can, we can use the ones from the, from the felt lot. As part of this project also, that large L-shaped building sort of just off to the right of Ford Hall are also rental units owned by Smith. Part of this project is also going to propose to remove, there's some walks. So the left-hand image, left-hand plan is the existing condition. You can see some shaded walks on the, what's, what is the south side of the building, I guess? Those really aren't, there's actually a bunch of walks and doorways that don't need to be connected. The walk is heaved, it's, there's single steps in some locations, so we're going to remove all that, put back just what we need for egress out to the front. There's also a stairway that sort of goes to nowhere. This is, oh, no. Did I lose the image? Yeah, I did. I had a street view image, though. Didn't, didn't make it. But there's a stairway on the, on one side of the building that doesn't go to any parking lots or any walkways, so we're going to propose to just remove that in its entirety. What am I doing here? All right, that's working. There we go. So, it's a little tough to see. So right above the corner there, right under where it says West Street, you can see a bright white sort of walk connection that goes from, it's sort of right above, off that corner of the building. There's a catch-in that goes from the, from the building out to the sidewalk. There's one adjacent to it that just leads to a grass lawn area. It's not used, it's overgrown by bushes. We're going to take that out and put some ganrels in those stairs that are there now as part of the improvement. But it's, it's primarily focused on the Ford Hall parking lot and just improvements to the rental units around it, so.
Just point out which the, which is the biggest tree, that 36-inch diameter tree?
Big tree. Actually, it's probably more visible in the aerial image. So if you can see, just to the back of the house, there's a big green tree. I think it's actually a Norway maple. It's just, it's one that's been there for a while, but it's, you know, unfortunately... Are the trees going back all the same size? One of them look bigger. There, we've got one larger elm proposed. There's some flowering cherries that are proposed. Where I was going with the, the other project, the rentalized, there are two trees, there are two oaks that we're going to propose along the street frontage along West Street because right now there isn't anything out there now other than just a grass slope, so we are going to propose some trees there. And just subsequently after this submission did go in, we did get some correspondence with the, we have had some correspondence with the botanical garden, who's actually got a number of other trees that they're looking to, you know, find homes for. So just because there is a lot of space down here, we may end up placing, you know, more trees than we, you know, actually need, but, you know, this will be, this will be the minimum number anyway.
Other questions?
I'm still going to cut off DPW comments.
I, I really liked the LED lights that you have on campus. I'm disappointed that we just wouldn't keep using those.
I think, I think it's, I think if they could replace all the lights at that location, they would. I think the concern is because, you know, we're taking out one, have to move it over to another place, and there's a continuous pedestrian corridor that, you know, the discontinuance of a similar type of light will be more, you know, more of an issue than having one type of light. They really want to update some of the ones down at the felt lot, and those are a lot more visible. And these, you know, these really are hidden behind, you know, all the homes and rental units and Ford Hall, so these are really pretty obstructed. You know, I think that if they had in the budget to replace everything, they would.
The other question I had is, we usually see a sort of parking space accounting for when Smith is horse-trading. Has that been done?
Not formally submitted, yes. I know, I don't know, maybe Carolyn can speak more with it. Charlie kind of has been, you know, managing this project and some of the library projects primarily for, for Smith, and I know this is sort of in advance of, you know, the Nielsen Library Project. And I don't, you, you may have had more conversations with him than I had to do about some of that, but...
I mean, I think the idea for that, this is adding parking, so they'll put this in the, in the hopper. And then when they come to do the library project, they're going to show how many are going to come off, and so then the spreadsheet would get adjusted again. So I think the permit, the original permit condition was concerned with spaces that come out of service initially, but, so because this is just adding, we haven't seen the updated spreadsheet, I mean, you have to approve it first, and then they'll, they'll adjust that.
I'd be interested in putting a contingency on seeing that pretty soon. I, I think for explanation to the public, we, you know, we have a lot of land in, in the middle of town that's paved over, and it's, you need a lot of, a lot of parking for a university, but we, there's been a very careful give and take on trying to keep up with new and not just let it sort of evolve into more and more as we head into hopefully fewer and fewer. So that would be my interest. If anybody wants to counter that, I'll take the discussion.
Seems like a good idea.
Any other questions for Jeff? When are you thinking on doing this this season?
I think they'd probably like to try to do it this season, yeah.
Lot of concrete. Okay, can I? Thank you, Mark.
DPW comments, but you want to take public?
Right. Does anyone here want to speak for the public? Nope. Carolyn has some comments from the DPW on this one.
So just two comments. One was about the proposed planting in the right-of-way on West Street, that they just want to, just more of a heads-up that before you propose, before that moves forward, you should just work with the tree warden to figure out the best location. And then the other one is they would like a condition regarding the stormwater treatment chamber, that before construction starts, they want to see a completed stormwater O and M plan and an inspection agreement for the system, recorded and executed at the registered dates.
Now, since there's a house there now...
There is, it was removed.
Go on.
Oh, it's, oh...
It's vacant.
So now...
Very big interior. So, so what we're doing right now, there's an existing catch basin on the site, it's an arid drain really, that takes water from that side of Ford and takes it over, actually over to Belmont Ave., which is sort of a convoluted way. And talking with DPW, it's much preferred to go toward West Street. So, you know, a small update that hasn't been made, the system is largely the same, but we're replacing one of the existing catch basins with a stormwater treatment chamber, and then that way putting all the new parking lot through that system, as well as taking some of the other, you know, runoff through that, which is currently untreated. So, you know, to the extent that we can, we've improved, you know, stormwater quality.
So we would have three conditions to the motion. We would have the two from the DPW, which are the...
Trees and stormwater.
Stormwater, and then a request, my request to have the parking plan updated based on what this means to the total number on campus.
And then also the photometric waiver? Do we need to separately...
Do what?
Do we need, is a waiver for photometric plan?
That could just be part of your approval, not a condition.
Ready?
Do you want to close public comment?
I'd like to close public comment, thank you. Motion from Ann, seconded by John. All in favor? Need a motion for the project?
Move to approve the site plan for 22-car parking lot by Smith College at 19 Arnold Ave., North Hampton, MAP ID 31D-057, with the three conditions, two by the DPW regarding the trees and the stormwater, and one regarding the parking plan update. Second.
John second. All in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, everyone.
Do we have anything else on your list, Carolyn? John moves to adjourn.
Second.
Tess?
All in favor? Thank you.